Would you raise your right hand?
No, wrong hand.
Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Being a duly elected member of Peters Township Council.
Being a duly elected member of Peters Township Council.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Peters Township Home Rule Charter.
The Peters Township Home Rule Charter.
And that I will, during my term of office.
And that I will, during my term of office.
Faithfully perform the duties of my office.
Faithfully perform the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I'll call the meeting to order. Rule call, Mr. Lauer.
Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigl.
President.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Arcuri.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
I'd ask that everyone please rise in place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart. Oops. First item on the agenda is public hearing. Purpose of this evening's public hearing is to accept comments on a proposed amendment to the Peters Township zoning ordinance. This amendment, if enacted, will change dimensional requirements within the village residential district. This evening's hearing was advertised in the Observer Reporter on December 12th and December 26th, 2017. The hearing notice was placed on the township's website and cable television message board. Action on this ordinance will occur at the January 22nd, 2018 meeting of council. At this point, I would turn the matter over to manager, Mr. Lauer.
The impetus for this proposed amendment came out of a review of the zoning ordinance in relation to a challenge that was filed by the Builders Association concerning our sprinkler ordinance. And while that appeal by the Builders Association has been withdrawn, it did point out what we believe is a deficiency in the ordinance that we would like to see corrected. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zook, who can explain to you exactly what's involved here.
Paul, it's a zoning ordinance amendment that only affects, this is the township zoning map, it only affects the area down here in the southeast corner of the township, if we could go to the other part. It affects the Village of Hackett area. This is approximately a 74-acre area, 112 properties involved. When we adopted the ordinance earlier in 2017, we created the village residential district. As Paul said, we had that challenge by the Builders Association. That was specifically related to side yard setbacks. So, one of the proposed amendments tonight we have is a change to our side yard setback in the village residential district. Right now, as written, it's five feet. This proposal would then change the side yard setback in the village residential district to seven and a half feet. So that would, what that creates is a 15-foot minimum distance between homes. And that would be the minimum that we would allow in any residential district. That's as close as you can get to the side yard. So that five foot is being changed, or being proposed to be changed, to seven and a half feet. I'll move up the chart. The second setback has to do with the front setback. When we adopted it, we had in the front setback, the required front yard setback in the village residential district was 10 feet minimum, 15 foot max. Working with this ordinance for the last four-plus months, we have found that that 10 and 15 is too close. It needs to move back, so we proposed ordinance before each tonight recommending and proposing that minimum front setback in the village residential district be 20 foot minimum, 25 foot max. That also would be the minimum front yard setback we would have in any of our residential districts. The last change is, when we adopted the ordinance, and this is a correction I should have caught before we adopted it. We had a minimum lot size of .32 acres. What that does is, in the Village of Hackett area and the village residential district, that creates a lot of non-conforming lots. If you look at those lots, if we go back to the zoom in that, there's lots, it's hard to see on there, but there are lots in the village residential district that are .1 acres, .2 acres. And by changing this and going with no minimum lot size, we don't create non-conforming lots down there. And also, Mark and I were meeting with potential developers. There's about 20, 30 acres of undeveloped land in the village residential district. They were looking at developing this area for some new residential homes in this district. And we looked at their conceptual plan, and it had these .32 acre lots with these smaller homes on them. It was consuming areas that could be buffers, that could be open space, that could be central green. So, reducing the lot size from .32 acres to no minimum lot size will allow the 35% lot coverage in the village residential district to dictate lot size. Those are three-dimensional changes. That's the only proposed changes in the village residential district. Planning Commission did review this at their November 9, 2017 meeting, and did recommend that council adopt this ordinance amendment.
And would any of the restrictions that were changing, they're not restrictions, but the changes that were made, would they affect the ability of certain lots not to get developed? I mean, if you're talking about a .1 acre lot, I mean, is there going to be enough space there to do the setbacks and everything?
Well, I'm sure any new lots that are developed or created down there won't be greater than .1.
Okay.
We do have existing homes in the Village of Hackett that sit on small lots that are probably a little bit non-conforming. They're not totally in compliance with the seven-and-a-half-foot side yard and the 20-foot front. But we have zoning regulations in place in our existing zoning ordinance that address non-conforming structures and non-conforming lots.
All right. Anybody on council, any questions?
The one part of this that confused me, which is not difficult to do, is you introduce it as being a result of the sprinkler ordinance, and it has nothing to do with it.
Well, actually, it does, because what the sprinkler ordinance says is that if you have homes that are located closer than 15 foot apart, they become classified as patio homes and therefore require sprinklers. And that was the concern of the Builders Association. They have a strong position against having sprinklers. And so, our ordinance has an effect that was adopted in conjunction, when it's applied in conjunction with the zoning ordinance, means that there will not be residential sprinklers in any new homes, because all homes will be at least 15 foot apart. And that is a dimension that the fire department has told us is safe in terms of constructing homes and not requiring sprinklers.
So, the ordinance as adopted for the village residential has a five-foot setback, so you could have homes 10 feet apart that would be required to have sprinklers. This will eliminate that.
Okay.
If I could just make an observation, Mr. Zook. One of the arguments for changing the front setback from 10 and 15 to 20 and 25 was the ability to park in the driveway.
Right.
And first of all, I'm not a fan of low setback numbers. However, with all of the developments that have been coming before us, the model's the same, with the garage in the front, people park in the driveway. You know, I don't know what to say. I just, I don't want to not approve it because of that, but I just am not happy with the idea that that's like the standard model that everyone's going to see. There's no creativity there, and it also, I think it doesn't really lend to the neighborliness of the neighborhood. But that was your primary rationale for that.
For moving it back, if it's 10 foot minimum, 15 foot max, car parked in the driveway interferes with sidewalks.
No, I understand.
That was a mistake to add a 10 and 15. This corrects that.
Ready for further questions or discussions, council? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments that they would like to make? And as chairman, I'll entertain a motion.
Do the hearing be closed?
I'll second.
If a motion is seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven, zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item on the agenda, you're done. The next item on the agenda would be the reorganization of council for 2018. First item would be election of chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jim Berquist.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further nominations? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I'm staying.
Six, zero, one, Mr. Lauer. What am I supposed to do now?
You're supposed to get up out of your chair.
Okay. I didn't know where I was supposed to go, just said it. That's why I'm asking. Let's switch tonight. All right.
I guess we should. I don't want to be Frank Coser. I don't understand that much. All right, next item on the agenda would be appointment of vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate David Ball for vice chairman.
I'll second. Any further nominations?
I would like to nominate Mr. Cozer.
We have a nomination for Frank Cozer.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Merrill has seconded. So, we're going to need a rule call.
Yes. Mrs. Merrill.
Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Cozer.
I guess I got to vote for myself, Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Ball.
Ball.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Steigl.
Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Arcuri.
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Berquist.
Mr. Ball.
Ball. Okay, Mr. Ball.
Mr. Cozer.
No, Cozer.
All right, next item on the agenda is appointment of the personnel appeals committee. That committee has been distinguished by great service by council members Ball, Berquist, and Merrill. I don't think we've had a meeting in a couple of years. If anyone wants to grab my slot, they're more than welcome to it, but otherwise, Mrs. Merrill, would you want to continue to be on?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to stay on the person.
Mr. Ball.
Yeah, fine.
Pardon me?
I'll stay there.
Anybody else want to take my spot?
I'll take your spot, if you don't mind.
Mr. Arcuri?
Free you up. It's better than doing shake hugs.
Well.
I looked on the list, and the next one's shake hugs, and I'm volunteering for this.
Yeah, as if I have a chance.
I'm going to duck one the night when the next one comes.
Yeah.
All right. So, we have a motion to appoint.
I don't think we need a motion.
Actually, you don't, because that's an appointment of the chairman.
You may just, wow.
I feel the power already. All right, so once that is done, we move to appointment of representatives to the Shake Cog Board of Directors. Unfortunately, it has to be an elected official. Mr. Cozer has served with distinction, and Council Moos has been his backup.
He's backed up, sir.
I will, since I have never had the pleasure of.
Are you sure?
Well, if you want it.
Well, I'm just warning you. I mean, it's not a pleasure at all, so I mean if.
Frank, I get that, but I mean, if you want it, it's your.
No, I mean, if you want to do it, I'll be your backup. That's, that's fine.
Sincerely, I don't want to do it.
You may actually like it. Your temperament is entirely different than mine.
Jim, I, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I certainly have no problem continuing to do it if you want, if you want to be the backup.
Okay, and I'll be your backup.
Fine, because I enjoy the free dinner once a month, so.
Mrs. Merrill, let's keep attendance for Shake Cog. All right, then, is that an appointment as well?
Yep.
Perfect. Moving right along. Next is appointment of professional consultants. Our solicitor has been John M. Smith from Smith &amp; Butts for, what, the last three or four years?
Since 2013.
Since 2013. He has offered to serve in that capacity again with no increase in his fees, so.
I move that we appoint John M. Smith of Smith &amp; Butts as the township's solicitor.
Second.
Any other comments or motions? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those again, say nay. And I think that carries seven, zero. Next, our township engineers. Of course, Mr. Zomitas has been our township engineer since 2007. Gateway Engineers has been our consulting engineer since 1978. And in addition, we have Leonard Smith.
Solarette.
Solarette.
Solarette. That's the backup.
As our alternate consulting engineer. So, his recommendation of Mr. Lauer that we continue to have Gateway and Leonard Smith and Solarette as our engineering firms.
And in addition to that, it's my recommendation that traffic planning and design be designated as the township's traffic engineer.
Okay.
I'll move that we appoint Gateway Engineer as the township's primary engineering company.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven, zero.
I think I'd like to recognize the fact that I'm overwhelmed that Mark's been here for 10 years. Now, I understand why his airline is going back probably an inch or two in 10 years. Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
Make a motion of 40,000 to the town's alternative consultant.
Second.
I'll give the second to Mrs. Merrill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And then finally, traffic planning and design.
Make a motion to appoint traffic planning and design as the township's traffic engineer.
Second. Second by Mr. Cozer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
That was actually Mr. Ball that seconded, Mr. Chairman.
I seconded.
Oh, you seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It just sounded like him.
Yeah.
I think that was six, zero, one, again, sorry, six, one, six, one.
Jim, before we move on, can I ask a question of Mr. Lauer? When was the last time we actually bid the engineering?
It has been, it has been a number of years since we have bid the consulting engineer. So, I mean, if that is something, yeah, I could say if that's something council wants to do in the upcoming year, we should know that well in advance, so that we can, in fact, get proposals. You know, one of the things that I think council should realize is that even though Gateway is your consulting engineer, a perfect example is the project that's going to come to you for engineering services at the next meeting. When there is any significant engineering project that is a municipal project, those are always set out to competitive bids, and Gateway bids those along with everyone else. The thing you get with Gateway engineers is they have been the township's consulting engineer, and they have that history with regard, and it's principally where they work. They have that history with regard to development in the township and review of those developments in terms of township regulations. And there's no doubt that others can do that. We just have this long history that's worked well, so. But I think, you know, if we want to consider that for next year, we should look at that sometime in summer and let council give us direction as to whether or not you want to bid that.
Thank you. All right, next we move to appointments to boards and authorities. First up is cable television. The cable board advises council on cable television issues and promotes local programming. This year, we have one position up for appointment. That would be Mrs. Toni Solkowski, been on cable since 2000. She's seeking reappointment. I know she has served with distinction, and this term is for three years.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Dr. Solkowski.
Second. Any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Sounds like seven to zero. Next up, construction appeals board. This board meets once a year to reorganize, and then if there is an appeal, they serve in that capacity. This year, we have, there was one-on-one meeting last year. Mr. Jim Phelan has, his term is expiring, and he is requesting reappointment. It's a three-year term, so.
So, moved.
Mr. Arcuri's moved, second.
Second.
I'm confused by our forum here. We have John, or Watson, and Ball.
That's, I could say, but that's a typographical error that someone's made.
Some anonymous person.
Yeah, me.
Who seconded? All right, Mr. Ball, all those in favor, say, any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I think, I'm actually thinking that he is the, he's the charter member of that committee. He's been on it since.
That may well be.
All right, environmental quality board is next. This board advises council on environmental issues, matters, and conducts a variety of very good environmental programs. The environmental quality board can have up to five to nine members. There currently are nine members. There are three positions expiring. Mr. Cosia, Mr. Sarzaga, and Mr. Sinazja. While Mr. Corsica and Sarzaga are seeking a reappointment, Mr. Sinazja is not.
Do we know whether, is there a attendance on here? I didn't see.
Second.
It's on the back.
I'd like to move that we appoint, reappoint Mr. Cosia and Mr. Sarzaga, and then appoint as a new, for four-year terms, and then appoint as a new member, Myra Fullerton.
Well, I don't think we should do two separate motions like that.
I hate them all.
Not, I think we should do it individually, so. Who do you move first?
Mr. Cosia.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Sounds like seven, zero.
Then I'll move to reappoint Tom Sarzaga.
Second.
Another four years.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Again, seven, zero. Do we want to add a ninth person, or just leave it at?
Well, I was very impressed with Mrs. Fullerton in her interview, and certainly don't mean to cut off Mrs. Merrill, so if you want to move for her appointment, or not, I will, I will make the motion, I will make the motion that we appoint Miranda Fullerton to the EQB.
Any other nominations? All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
You got to have nine. You can't have eight.
Yeah.
Should be an odd number.
That's right.
For the times.
And it's a good board, so. Next would be the library board. Obviously, this board is just an operating library. The library board can have seven members. The term is for three years. This term would expire January 2021. There is one position currently expiring, and that is Ms. Kathleen McAvoy, and she is seeking reappointment.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Ms. Kathleen McAvoy to the library board.
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Again, seven, zero. Park and Recreation Board, the Parks and Recreation Board has seven members, which three are recommended by the school board but approved by council. The term length is three years, expiring January 2021. Currently, there are two expiring terms. Both are school district recommended appointments, and that would be Mr. Patrick Earhart and Mr. John Yoka, and both are seeking reappointment.
I move that we reappoint Pat Earhart to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
Any further nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven, zero.
Move we appoint John Yoka.
Second.
Any other nominations?
I have a question. Is there some reason why he's only made half of the meetings?
I do not have an explanation for that, but if you need that, I can.
I would prefer to have some explanation.
I mean, I don't know if we have, we don't have the, do we have the discretion not to
appoint him, since he's a school board rec?
Oh, yes, you, yes. I did, it's a recommendation from the school board. It's not an appointment by the school.
Did they make the recommendation again this year, or is it just a continued?
Yeah, that's a good point.
This is a continuation of his appointment, so, and again, if you want, I can reach back to the, to Mr. Yoka.
I'll make a motion that we table.
I'll second that.
I think that's good.
And in an interim, you find out what the reason is.
Mr. Lauer, I did ask you that on an email. Can you find out whether or not his doing the YES program on cable TV is supposed to be in lieu of some of the meetings? Because he's been running that program apparently for some time.
Yes, okay.
So.
But I would check.
Find out from Michelle what the story is.
All right, so we have a motion to table the appointment of Mr. Yoka. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes, seven, zero. Next, Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. The authority is a joint authority with three other municipalities, Union Township, Nottingham Township, and Finleyville. There are 10 members, and Peters Township gets to appoint three members to terms of five years. Currently, Mr. Richard Comey is seeking reappointment. The term would expire January 2023.
And the thing that you should know is Mr. Comey serves as the chairman of that board.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Comey.
You have a second?
Yeah.
All right, Monica second, Mrs. Merrill second. Any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That is again, seven, zero. Next is Peters Township Sanitary Authority. This authority operates two sewer plants and the sewerage system for the western two-thirds of the township. There are five members on the board, and terms are four or five years. Currently, Ms. Rebecca Kaminsky is seeking reappointment. The term would expire January 2023. In addition, Mr. Sylvester recently resigned his term, and we will point out that it was filled by Mr. John Golding for action of council in December of 2017. However, Mr. Golding has a conflict, and his employer may or has barred him from serving.
It bars him from serving?
Isn't barred, so we will have to fill the recently nominated Mr. Golding's position. So, at this point, our, if we have a motion would be to reappoint Rebecca Kaminsky.
I'd like to first reappoint Rebecca Kaminsky to another five-year term on Peters Township Sanitary.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I would like to point out that Mr. Golding has recently taken a position with the auditing firm that audits the sanitary authority. He's doing that as, on a part-time basis, but they've made it clear, in their opinion, this creates a conflict and bars him from, from serving on the board. He was not aware of that at the time when he applied, so this.
Quite a project.
Well, I would like to add, he was a very good candidate for this, for this board, so.
And we don't have a long list of people interested in serving on the sanitary authority, so. authority, so we're going to go back out again and, and see whether or not we can generate.
I think we should be somewhat comforted in the fact that he would be the auditor of this, because this is something that you also are very interested in.
So you're going to advertise for?
For another person for the sanitary authority.
Perfect. Next is Planning Commission. The Planning Commission advises council on planning matters. That kind of makes sense. As well as approves various plans and developments within the township. Mr. Conrad Tleppis?
Tleppis.
Was appointed in August of 2017 to fill the vacancy of Mr. Germain. The term length is four years, expiring 2022. There's one position. Mr. Jeff Mills, he's been on the Planning Commission since 2006, and is re, and is seeking reappointment.
I'd like to make a motion that we table reappointment until we have conversation with Mr. Mills about his ability to attend more than 50% of the meetings.
All right. We have a first and a second for tabling Mr. Mills' appointment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Is that?
Depends on how Mr. Ball voted. I don't know how we voted.
Go ahead.
Should you vote yea or nay?
Nay.
Oh, then.
Four, three, three, four, I guess.
I voted.
We voted to table.
Mr. Law, could I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Merrill.
The motion is to table.
The motion is to table.
Correct.
Mrs. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Steigel?
Aye.
Mr. Arcurry?
Nay.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Ball?
Nay.
Mr. Coser?
Nay.
Mr. Berquist?
Nay.
Okay. And at this point, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Mills to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other appointments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I, okay. For three to appoint Jeff Mills to the Planning Commissioner.
So we have a vacancy on the Planning Commission. We do have a list of, it's for an alternate position. We do have a list of candidates, and we will schedule at a, at an upcoming council meeting interviews for that position.
How many do you have? I want to review 18.
Well, we have quite a few, and, and if you want, we can narrow that down so that it's a reasonable number for council to interview. I mean, that's up to you.
Mr. Zook, I would like to ask, I mean, Mr. Mills, I mean, he's served on the committee with distinction. I mean, this, this is the most meetings he's missed. There've been some, was it just an unusual year, you know?
He informed me that on, for the last year, his daughter plays basketball on Thursday nights.
Ah, that's right.
That, that's why he's missed the years.
So is her, is his?
Is she still playing? That's right. He did tell me that.
I don't know that. I don't know what the schedule is for the rest of the year.
But what I think we don't.
The girls do play on Thursday.
What I don't have a problem doing is having a conversation with Mr. Mills and expressing a concern.
Okay.
And that would be the comment that I was going to make. My vote of no is based on the fact that I believe participation needs to be significantly improved.
I, I agree.
And I would say, just in deference to Mr. Mills' service, I do believe that with distinction, and perhaps if he's able to stay on as the alternate, we could perhaps make an adjustment so he's not removed completely compared to other people who are able to get there more frequently. I, I recognize his service, but I agree with Mr. Lewis.
Okay. I welcome that discussion with Mr. Mills.
Next, Youth Commission. This commission works in conjunction with the Washington County Juvenile.
Are we going to narrow down the list of planning people? Or are we going to?
We're going to.
Well, can I suggest that what we do is we, we will put together a list. I will meet with Mr. Berquist, and, and we can narrow it down to something that council's comfortable with.
That's what I think is to. I trust.
If you don't mind, when we do our resumes, I'd still like to see.
Sure. I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
All right. Youth Commission. And I'd like to say, this is a very valuable commission within our community. They do an outstanding job. And at this juncture, we have three terms expiring. Mr. Paul McGrath, Mr. John Barnes, and Mr. Raymond Heisen?
Say.
Say.
It's one syllable, say.
Save?
Say.
Man, you guys are on top of that. I'm an English major, for God's sake. Although they are all seeking reappointment, Mr. Zay is requesting a one-year sabbatical, and I believe Chief Grimes does appreciate his service on this particular commission, and would like us to consider some amendment to allowing him to have the sabbatical. So I'd like, I'd like first to cover that issue by council members.
Why don't we just appoint?
Yeah, well, that's what I would suggest that you do.
We'll know next year if he's zero for six, then we'll know why.
But it's, but it's not only Chief Grimes, it's the remaining members of the, that committee value his service and are recommending that, that occurs.
Okay. Well, then, again, so we have Mr. McGrath, Mr. Barnes, and Mr. Seth, all seeking reappointment.
I'll move that we reappoint them all.
Are we going to do them all together?
Do you want to do one?
Yes, you're being contradictory.
No. People that were, the, the, the one that I talked about was, there were two people that were already existing members, and we, and you were adding another person who wasn't on there, and I think that should be better on.
We're going to spend more time debating this point than if we had just done the three separately, so.
I'll second Mr. Currie's point. All three members at the same time.
Wow. The camaraderie here is just unbelievable. We have a first and a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I believe that's seven, zero. Zoning Hearing Board. This board acts as a quasi-judicial agency to hear land use ordinance appeals. There are five full-time members and two alternates, though only one alternate position is currently filled at this time. Two terms are expiring. Mr. John Thasek, which has served since 2008, and Ms. Stacy Noble since 2009, both are seeking reappointment to new terms. It's a five-year term, and they would expire January 2022.
I would like to make these separately and move to appoint Mr. Thasek to another term.
I'll second.
Any other motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven, zero.
I'd like to ask Mr. Law to readvertise for the zoning hearing board, so that we can get an alternate position.
And we do have people who are interested in serving on that.
Is Ms. Noble an alternate?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Her attendance was zero out of the nine meetings, which I think is probably a problematic relative to her reappointment.
Yes, I'd like to table that motion to reappoint pending interviewing further candidates.
Are alternates required to go if they already have a warrant? Not required, but the other alternate that we have attends every, who's the other alternate? Sashelle.
Sashelle.
She attends all meetings.
And you would hope that the alternate would at least attend enough meetings to have an idea of how the board operates, so that there's continuity in decision-making?
I agree with that. Did she officially ask for reappointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Did anybody else in Washington want to be? Very encouraging.
Did you have that discussion?
I did not.
All right. So we have a motion by Mrs. Merrill to table.
I'll second.
And we have a second now?
Table and also conduct additional.
And conduct additional interviews, which Ms. Noble could certainly reapply. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Abstain.
One abstention?
And you will note, I will abstain, because I'm sure most of you know Stacy's my cousin-in-law. If that is an actual term, she's married to my cousin, so that's why I'm abstaining.
Cousin-in-law. I don't want to go there.
She is married, she is, she is married to my cousin, okay? So it makes her my cousin-in-law, or whatever there's a term for it.
That's an official Western.
I sit across the table from her at Thanksgiving and Christmas, okay? That's all I'm going to say.
And that would be abstention enough. Six oh one. Next, I would like to, it's Peters Township Council attendance time, and I would like to point out that Mr. Arcurrie somehow, some way made 36 out of 36 meetings for permanent attendance.
I think he didn't want you to share the meeting.
Yeah. You know.
Well, to be fair, Mr. Golds will attend 36 out of 36.
That tells me two things. One, he needs to get a life, and, and two, that's just an outstanding effort.
I have to come to confession, I have the lowest attendance out there, but I'm sort of embarrassed by that.
So I would just point out that.
Going so long, you, you deserve a little leeway.
I want to point out that no one named Frank missed a meeting last year.
Mr. What?
Oh, you were awesome. I'm sorry, Frank. I apologize.
Yeah, Mr. Cousins.
Awesome. Must be the name.
That's it. No, I just wanted to get away from the baby.
That's why you still want to be Shake On.
There we go. Good thing my wife doesn't watch these meetings on television.
All right. Next would be a variety of miscellaneous reorganization items, first of which is the official newspaper to meet township advertising needs. A daily newspaper of countywide circulation is required. The Observer Reporter is our current newspaper for legal ads, and we are recommending that, Mr. Law is recommending the Observer Reporter be declared official newspaper for township legal ads in 2018.
Just to be clear, the law stays in asking the hard copies printed in law, law front?
Yes.
So simply on the basis of the cost of advertising is the reason we're recommending the Observer Reporter compared to the Post-Go-Set, which is also circulating in the township?
Yes. The, the reality is that, that legal ads don't serve the function they used to, where it was the source of information for residents and vendors wishing to do business with the township to get notification. The reality is there are so many more effective ways of doing this. This still is a legal requirement, and the township needs to have an official newspaper, and it's my suggestion that we use the Observer Reporter.
Well, I, I think not only from a cost standpoint, but I think the Observer Reporter is definitely considered the, the newspaper of Washington County more than the Post-Go-Set. So I'll, I'll move that we approve the Observer Reporter as the official newspaper for township legal ads 2018.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Sounds like seven, zero. Next would be council meetings. Section 2.10.0b of the Home Rule Charter requires council to meet twice monthly for regular meetings. Currently, we meet the second and fourth Mondays of the month at 7:30 PM. We have a couple of issues this year, which would be, one that I usually miss, which is the Memorial Day week. We, we moved it to the Tuesday, since Memorial Day is May 28th, and then in December, moving the meeting to December 17th instead of the 24th, which is Christmas Eve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven, zero. Next is municipal liens.
There's no action really required by council on the municipal liens. This is being presented to you for informational purposes. It is noteworthy that Jordan's efforts with regard to collecting outstanding garbage liens has resulted in a almost 18% decrease in the amount of outstanding liens. So to that extent, we're making progress. I do think it's important for people to understand that we are vigorously out collecting those and pursuing share of sales where, where people choose not to pay.
Well, I'd like to point out that even at this juncture, is, is our current outstanding balance is $68,493.
Mm-hmm.
And.
It was high.
It used to be easier for me to figure out what that is, as far as a mill each, you know, in, in increase, but what would that be in?
Well, a tenth of a mill is about $310,000, so it's, it's a significant sum of money.
It's a significant amount of money, yeah.
But when you look at what, you know, the billings for garbage collection are over a million five each year, so, you know, the, these liens have, have been generated over a, you know, some of them go back to the start of collection, so as a percentage of, of the annual collection, it's still fairly small, and our intention is to make it smaller.
It still remains inconceivable to me that someone can't pay their garbage.
I would agree.
That's why we went after them.
For the vengeance. Next is police payroll deductions.
Yeah. Under Act 600, the township has the ability to require police officers to contribute to their, to their pension, up to 5% of payroll. Given the level of costs associated with the pension, as well as in comparison to the, the funds that are afforded us by the state, there still is a need to have the 5% payroll deduction. So it's my recommendation that council approve resolution 010118.
So moved.
Well, how long has it been since we have had the, you know, the 5% contribution level? It seems like, it's been since I've been on council.
It's been since you've been on council, and, you know, and one of the things that changed in the police pension plan, and, and some of it is a result of performance of investments, but some of it's also a result in benefits afforded. The plan hasn't been fully funded for a while.
Right.
It's funded better than most municipal police pension plans, but it is not to a point of being fully funded. There was a point in time when the plan was actually overfunded.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven, zero. Next is the Sewerage Council. The Washington County Sewerage Council is a joint municipal cooperative agency formed in 1969, and Peters Township is one of the original member municipalities. The council meets twice per year. It administrators on-lot sewerage permits and enforcements. It is recommended that we reappoint Mr. Ryan Jerosky and, as primary representative retaining Ed Zook as the alternate.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven, zero. Depository. We have a current agreement with PNC that runs until September 2018. PNC has been our depository for, I believe, quite some time, and they continue to provide services to us at a reasonable cost.
At no cost.
I think that's pretty reasonable.
Yes.
All right. New business. There is none.
We need to do minutes of the regular council meeting?
December.
With December 18th. I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven, zero. At this point in time, we have opportunity for audience comments. So anyone in the audience have anything to speak? Mr. Book?
Run Books 855 Bevotten Road. At last council meeting, you voted to approve a two-camera system for installation on Route 19 to monitor various vehicles. I looked at my records and hearkened back to 2011, our last endeavor into the motion picture business. At that time, we expended, I believe it was approximately $21,000 on a camera to capture license plates and numbers. How many arrests did that result in, Mr. Law?
I would not know that off the top of my head. I know that for a number of years, that, that device was not in use. It is currently in use. One of the things that's changed in the state of Pennsylvania is that you no longer have registration stickers on, on license plates, and the, what the state has suggested is that municipalities use license plate readers to enforce that, that rule, and in fact, that license plate reader is back in service.
It is in service, but it was out of service for approximately five years?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head, because I'd have to talk to the police chief.
Okay. Well, when this new plate, license plate reading device, or whatever we choose to call it, law enforcement cameras came up, before you voted on it, I would have liked to have seen a little more healthy debate, and I would have simply asked several questions. First of all, I'm wondering just exactly how successful this system is. If I recall, there are 200 cameras in Allegheny County. Do we have any idea how many arrests occurred? And of that, how many convictions were achieved? What's the basic number, maybe 200? I don't know. The next thing I would have liked to have known is, Mr. Arcuri, you came real close when you asked whether or not we can exit the use of this system if we choose to. The thing that didn't happen is the follow-up question, how long are we going to wait before we make a decision? In other words, how long do you want this system in play before you decide whether it's?
Wasn't it for a certain, wasn't it for like a two year?
You can withdraw from this at any time. I think what the intention is, is to look at this on an annual basis to see whether or not. You know, there is a, there is a cost to the township. All costs of the township are approved by council through the budgeting process, so we, we're going to look at this on an annual basis.
That I would hope would happen, but I, again, I was, I was a little concerned because those fundamental basic, at least in my mind, fundamental basic questions about the appropriateness of appointing funds to purchase that system, just how practical and worthwhile it would be. Thank you for your time. By the way, I would, I would like to see at the end of our one-year experience with this new system, exactly how many criminals, violators, we were able to apprehend, and I'd also want.
But I, I, I get where you're coming from, but I also think the importance of this is in, 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 when we have experienced a, of, of a terrorist attack or a, a major incident, that's when the cameras can become extremely valuable to provide, because this is coming from the, the Washington County District Attorney's Office.
Well, let me recall that the, that the last.
And Allegheny County.
The last camera system, when I looked into it, it was apparent that a lot of the money that was put into that camera system somehow disappeared. In other words, it was a scam, and I have the evidence, but I'm not going to share that with you at this point. I don't want to talk about whether it's appropriate or not, or whether we're going to see any kind of terrorist attack or whatever the situation is. I'm just interested to see whether or not we're going to get our bang for the buck.
Paul, didn't, if I could.
Something similar to this to apprehend the individuals that were working in the cars or businesses?
Well, actually, the one that I would like to point to, and I do not have statistics on how many times it is used, but the case that is most recent, in which I'm familiar that this technology allowed for an arrest, was the police officer who was shot in North, in, in New Kensington. They were able to track the whereabouts of that car by virtue of the fact that there was a network of, of cameras. So, you know, I think you can, you can attempt to gather statistics. I hope that we don't have an incident in Peterstownship that warrants the, the use of these, but I think we do have cases like this, and we all should have an appreciation for that, that these kind of things happen. Having that tool available as an investigative tool, I think is crucial for the police department.
So we will get some reports.
Your time's, your time's expired. So we will get some reports, correct?
You used up part of my time.
Good point. All right. All right, next, as we said, there is no unfinished business at this.
Is there any other audience comments?
Oh, any other audience comments?
No.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Now, new business, there is currently none. Correspondence, none. So it moves to payroll and bills, which I have reviewed payroll and bills, and nothing out of the ordinary, and I move that we approve payroll and bills.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That's seven to zero. I don't know if anyone has any comments on the various minutes from our various boards. Saying done. We're down to miscellaneous. The miscellaneous item is our annual joint workshop with Peterstownship Council and the Peterstownship School Board, which would normally be scheduled for Monday, January 29th, or Monday, February the 5th.
I have had an opportunity to talk to Dr. French. The school board has indicated that they believe that it would be useful to have a meeting, so if council wants, we can schedule it on one of those two Mondays.
What about the question of where would we be relative to the road and?
Well, the only thing that will be, be done at that point is that we will have selected a, an engineer to design that. What we will not have for that meeting is any information with regard to the road, or more importantly, the intersection of East McMurray Road. But the, the school board feels that, that there are other items that would be valuable to discuss with council.
Whose turn is it to host?
It is their turn to host.
Neither day is by neither day is by the road.
All right. That means we won't, that means we won't have cookies from.
Well, I can tell you this, if we have it on the 5th, we won't, because my parents will be on the cruise, but if we have it on the 29th, I'll find a way to give my mom a set of cookies, so.
The 30th is my birthday.
Oh, well, no, forget it then.
I'm sorry.
All right.
There's more cookies frozen.
All right, that's fine. I'll go, I'll get some fro- we can do it on the 5th, I'll get some frozen cookies, okay? All right.
All right, Paul, will you let us, Mr. Law, you let us know?
Yes.
All right. Any, anybody want anything for the, for the next meeting? Anything on the agenda for next meeting?
I'd like to know the status of the building down on Allegheny Road, where that is procedurally.
We're going to talk about that a bit in executive session tonight.
You should just put, you should just put that on every week.
We do have an executive session.
We didn't know about, right?
Well, no, actually, it's in the manager report.
We have a couple of items on the executive session, so any, any, any other things?
Have an update on the Y?
We can talk about that in executive session as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other items?